And welcome to the special meeting of Glendale City Council. It's our community meeting. And we'd like to take roll call, please.
Council members, divide.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mr. Senani.
Here.
So I'd like to send some welcoming comments to everyone that's here. This meeting in your community is part of my initiative to bring Glendale City Council to your neighborhoods. And this is the second meeting that we're holding. The first one was held at the Pacific Community Center. And it was overall a very successful meeting. However, we were somewhat disheartened by the lack of attendance and what a difference a meeting makes. Let me assure you, we're so happy to see you here because the whole point of having these meetings is to give you easier access to Glendale City Council. We're coming to you as opposed to you on a workday having to have to come to us. So again, I'm so happy to have you here. I'm so happy that you're here. Hopefully, we'll have a very productive meeting. The items on the agenda are somewhat north Glendale-centric. They're meant to be because, again, we want to bring those issues that are specific to certain parts of Glendale to those parts of Glendale for discussion. And I look forward to the meeting. With that said, what's the first item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the first item on this agenda for this meeting is public comment period. But before we get to that, a little bit of housekeeping. If anyone wishing to speak during this portion, there are speaker cards available for you to fill out and to turn in to me, after which the mayor will call upon you. We have three cards already. Restrooms are just outside this hallway for anyone wishing to use them. And other than that, if anyone wishes to speak, again, they can fill out a card and bring it up. We have, and with your permission, after that, I'll read all of the items at once into the agenda.
That'd be great. Thank you. First speaker we have is Andrew Reichman, followed by Brenda Gant. Mr. Mayor, how much time?
Reichman.
Uh, I'm sorry, it may be Reichman. Yes, if it's an I, it's a Reichman. Sorry about that. Followed by Brenda Gant.
Three minutes, okay? Three minutes sufficient time?
Yeah, well, I can work with it.
Okay, let's work with it.
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening.
Mayor, thank you for having me. The reason why I come to you guys tonight is I have a concern. Oh, sorry.
State your name for the record.
I am Andrew Reichman. The reason why I come here tonight is to address a potential safety issue surrounding the Crescent Valley High School. I actually wrote something up, if you guys don't mind for me to read it.
Please, go ahead.
Absolutely, just one second. The example over here is the aerial view of Crescent Valley High School. And my main concern is taking place between Prospect and Glenwood Avenue. Okay, here, I will go ahead and read it off. First off, actually, I'd like to apologize for my unfit attire. I just came from work. I would like to have undressed a little bit better. My longtime girlfriend is a senior at CVHS, and we have lunch together almost every day. We have both witnessed far too many near fatal accidents. Some of the students, friends of the students and/or significant others in my case, use the streets surrounding the school as if it is a raceway. I cannot stand by and wait for something tragic to happen to a member of my community. We watch the students return to the school while we eat our lunch. We usually park facing southward on Glenwood towards the corner of Prospect Avenue. And almost every single day, there is a large number of students that leave the school for lunch, in particular, walking, I guess that would be eastbound on Prospect Avenue. And once they return, there's a lot of traffic, obviously, coming to and from. And at the crosswalk between Prospect and heading over towards the school, it's a lot like a blind corner, you really can't see. And that seems to be the particular spot where students or individuals choose to race by. I've, I can say that I've truly almost seen six or seven kids almost get hit. They really do race through that area, and it's pretty sickening. I watch as the handicapped students walk back from the church because the church provides a lunch. And it's the same exact spot that I see these kids in cars going 40-plus miles an hour. It's really, really bad. I just really hope that we can figure out a solution to the problem. I mean, I would suggest possibly speed bumps along Prospect Avenue just to slow down the traffic. There is a elementary school right down the street, too, and there's a lot, a lot of students that go there early in the morning as well, and younger students, along with the church. That's pretty much all I have to say. I'd just like to bring attention to it, and hopefully, we can come up with a solution. I apologize if I wasn't the best. This is one of my first times speaking in public, so anyway, thank you very much for your time, and have a great night.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reichman. You did great. Thank you. The next person is Brenda Gant, followed by Jeff Hughes.
Hi, I'm Brenda Gant. Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. I am newish in this area. I grew up in La Crescenta and now live in Spar Heights for the last two years. And we live here on Downing, just a block away. And I understand to solve a parking problem where there were employees on the next street over, that it was permitted, made permit only on Downing, which is fine. However, one thing that I think is not fair, and other members, residents on Downing feel the same way, is that we have to pay $25 per year, per car, to park in front of our own houses. And I would think that there would be a bit more fair solution. This is supposed to help us, the permits, and I don't think it's right that we should have to pay to park in front of their own houses when nobody else in the area does. So, you know, I can understand that there's some administrative fee to providing the permit, but $25 per year, per car, does not seem reasonable. Second item is, I'm also active on our Spar Heights Facebook page, and other people have said this as well. There's smoking restrictions in Glendale and in Montrose. And there were many signs up in Montrose that have now been removed, and smoking on the boulevard is very much a problem. And there's a huge smoking litter problem as well. And I would, and others would like to see prominent no-smoking signs be put up and them being, the smoking ordinances being enforced as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gant. Jeff Hughes.
Good evening, City Council. This is my first time being here. I'm a 21-year employee of the city of Glendale. I've been up on Downing Avenue for 26 or 27 years now. I would like to address the barking dog issue. I'm surrounded by barking dogs. To get anything done about that, I mean, really done about that, it takes seven days, three neighbors logging down, barking times, lengths of times, and dates. How can I do that when all my neighbors have dogs that bark? That's way too difficult. I mean, I have rights here, too. The people that have the dogs have rights, but I would hope that a human being would stand taller than a dog. I mean, God bless them all, but something has to be done because I'm losing my mind that we're there, you know? And I've talked to the neighbor. She's trying to cooperate. She's doing the best he can, she can, but for a long time, it hasn't been good. I mean, I like dogs, I like cats, I like them all, but at 10 o'clock at night when they're out in the backyard yipping, and I have to yell or blow a stadium air horn to keep them quiet, that's a problem. Dog behind me does the same thing. It's horrible. Something's got to be done to make it, to give me, us, more rights than a dog has, you know? I would agree with my wife, Brenda, about the non-smoking ordinance up in Montrose. That has to come back, you know? I'm not a smoker. I don't think I should become a smoker because someone else smokes. I think it's, it's not healthy for me. I don't like it. I would also like to address the traffic situation in Glendale. The speeders, the red light runners, the stoplight runners. We need officers parked, put them in, put them behind, build walls, have them hide out. But people, these people need to understand that there are laws in this town, and they're constantly being broken. They're cutting people off, they're darting out in front of people. I see people come up to a stop sign like it's a big surprise. They almost cut me off, almost. On a regular basis, I probably prevent, on my own, 15 to 20 accidents a day with my driving skills. It's hard for us. It's very difficult for us. And all of us in my division, we all have the same complaint. It's getting scary. Something has to be done, you know? I know you can't, you know, pull everybody over, but if you can set a precedent and have two months, three months' worth of heavy police officer involvement in the way people drive in this town, that would really be a good thing. And I think, you know, my division would appreciate, and all the residents in this town would appreciate that. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hughes. Mr. Clerk, are there any more cards?
No cards have been submitted.
Folks, this will be the only opportunity for you to speak, so if you'd like to speak, now's the time. Otherwise, we're going to move on with the next agenda. Yes, Mr. Najarian?
I just have a few questions regarding the speakers. To Rubik, did the preferential parking go through the TPC on Downing Street as referred to?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Councilman Najarian, yes, every preferential parking application goes in front of the TPC for approval.
Do you, do you notice any particular problem? Have you heard any other complaints? This is the first complaint I've heard from the young lady.
Councilmember Najarian, me all, I have, this is the first complaint that I have heard also. And I don't recall when this was put in place, but I, probably it's five, six years, if not longer.
Okay. Well, if I can just perhaps make a suggestion, if you could please review the circumstances which gave rise to that, and if those circumstances are still in effect, obviously, I think there's a need. The neighborhood was being inundated by employees parking. We don't want that, but, and I think we're reviewing the fee structure anyway next budget cycle, are we not?
Every budget cycle.
Every, every budget cycle. So we'll have a chance to look at those, at those fees. And so, thank you. The other, the other comment I just wanted to make to the gentleman complaining about Crescent Valley, that is not in the city of Glendale, that's in the county of Los Angeles. And perhaps a sensitive county supervisor can make some adjustments there in the near future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Najarian. No more speaking cards. Public comments are closed. Let's go to item 3A.
Mr. Mayor and Council, for discussion before you today are a number of items. Under discussion under 3A is use of technology and community outreach, B is north Glendale infrastructure projects and public works, C is mayor's challenge for safer people and safer streets program, and D is Montrose Vision 2020. And finally, E is north Glendale open space and park improvement and development project update.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. We'll bring up Brian Ganley, our chief information officer, to review for you and the community, to unveil for you and the community, the new endeavor at providing information, very useful, very user-friendly, and in a way that is going to be quite utilitarian for everybody that relies on city of Glendale. I will also submit to you and to the audience as well, that per our charter, the council cannot take action outside of the council chambers. So all of this information, and all the information we take in from the community, is information for your edification only as opposed to action.
Certainly.
That's the function of the charter. Mr. Ganley?
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight to present to you the measuring performance in Glendale dashboard that the city has recently launched. I'm going to cover very quickly what is MPG, transparency in general, how we're basing that on the 10 council priorities, where it's at on the city's webpage, and then walk through very briefly the budget module, as well as our KPI, our key performance indicator reports that we've launched on the new dashboard. So what is measuring performance in Glendale? MPG is our branding for the site. It is a website. We call it our dashboard. And it's a website, the purpose of which is to report the budget, key performance indicators, or any other data to the public. The goal of the site is to present charts, graphs, photos, and other easy-to-read, easy-to-understand information about metrics that we're already tracking. And I'll go through that very briefly. All of the data used to calculate the metrics are available for download, and I'll cover that as well. That data's been available for quite some time. Transparency, so in the, the goal being transparency here, of publishing the data that the city uses to make decisions and to track our performance. You'll find the transparency button at the very bottom of the city's website that we launched last year. So transparency, right there, the little unlocked lock on the bottom of every page on the website. When you click on the transparency button up at the top, you'll see measuring performance in Glendale. That's our brand-new dashboard that I'll get into in just a moment. I want to very briefly go through some of the other data that we've been publishing for quite some time now. The city of Glendale's mission and vision statement, that contains the 10 council priorities that I'll cover in just a moment. The city's budget, financial reports such as the CAFR, key performance indicators, as I mentioned already, the municipal code, police reports, treasures reports, and an interactive map of the project progress. So the 10 council priorities that we're basing this dashboard on, in the city's vision statement, budget document, and other documents, fiscal responsibility, exceptional customer service, economic vibrancy, informed and engaged community, which would be part of what this dashboard is meant to be, safe and healthy community, balanced quality housing, community services and facilities, infrastructure mobility, arts and culture, and sustainability. We've launched the dashboard with three of these priorities in mind today, and will be expanding over time. So the homepage, once you click on transparency and MPG, looks like that. Measuring performance in Glendale, three, we call these tiles, the buttons on the screen there, budget, economic vibrancy, and safe and healthy community, from those 10 council priorities that I just spoke of. So I want to do a little bit of a before and after to show you what we're trying to present here. And this would be the before. Absolutely no comment on our wonderful finance people that I know are in the audience. This is available on the website now. It is precise, it is accurate, it is information-dense. There is a lot of great information there, but it is not necessarily easy to use and understand. So this is the dashboard budget module. And this is just a screenshot. I'm going to jump in on a live version in just a moment. And you can see here, a map up at the top of the various capital projects in the city, $668 million operating budget for fiscal year 1415, and $356 million multi-year capital budget. That's not just the current year, that's all of the years that contain funding for projects currently in progress. What I'll show you in just a moment is how you can very easily click anywhere on the screen and get more information. So this is another screenshot. We did this just in case we didn't have an internet connection or any other technical difficulty, since we're outside the council chamber tonight. So as you dig into the budget, as I'll do in just a moment, you can dig into the public works budget, and you can look at some of the various projects going on. This is an example of every aspect of a particular area of the budget. This covers every department and every function that the city does, everything that's in the normal budget document that's online. As you dig in even further, again, this is three mouse clicks in, public works projects, sources of funding, all of the information that's available in the budget, available here, in an easy-to-use, a couple of mouse clicks, very easy to understand and easy to access information. And that's what transparency is all about, is publishing that information and making it as easy to use as possible. The other half of our dashboard is our key performance indicators. And again, before and after. So this is an example of the before. For a number of years now, we've been publishing what I believe is several hundred key performance indicators across the entire city, every department and every function. Very valuable information to us internally, we use to track our performance, and it is available on the website now. Looks very similar to that budget document that I showed you. It is 31 pages of information. So the dashboard version, the MPG version, and again, we have not got to the point where we have all of those several hundred metrics, and we probably never will. But what the goal is, is to pull out the key metrics that are most important to the community and to the departments, to make them easy to use and easy to understand. So what we have here are our public safety metrics, and I can walk through them very quickly. Answer time for the fire department, this is 5.1 seconds on average for all of 2014. They pick up the phone within five seconds after it starts ringing, on average. Fire calls, this is a response time, again, an average for all of 2014. Fire department's going to get there on a call about a fire. This is a particular type of fire call that is about an actual fire in just over five minutes. For a medical call, again, a different type of call for a medical issue, even less than that, 4.5 minutes. And service calls are all other calls not involving a fire or a medical issue, and even then, response time is 5.2 minutes. I'm going to jump into a couple of these in just a moment and show you what information is available when you click on these buttons. For the police department, the metrics that we have on the site, calls for service, average incidents per month, 10,759 incidents per month. And I'll show you a graph that shows throughout the year how many calls average per month.
I think it's probably worth noting at this point, when you, when you look across those tiles, you have the goal achieved or not achieved, that'll be color-coded, but then there are other banners that are there for measure. And the idea being that each key performance indicator by itself really doesn't mean too much, but if you take them all together, it forms rather a mosaic of the performance of the given departments. And so some things, well, you'll say, wow, you're just measuring it, but what do you do with it? Well, we, we take that information, juxtapose it to other information, and together, we get a composite view of what the department looks like and how it's performing, which we then use to evaluate the department director, who then evaluates his or her middle managers and management group, and then down the line to the employees. Sorry, Brian.
Thank you. Very well said. And of course, in addition to that, this information, having been on the website in a more difficult, compact, harder-to-understand format in that 31-page PDF document, now very visible, very easy to use, and will grow over time as we add more data to the page. So some of the other metrics in the police department, property crimes, 257 incidents per month on average. All of these are for 2014 data, which is all that we've published so far. Over time going forward, we'll be adding data for 2015 and future years, and as time permits, adding historical data as well for a greater comparison over time. Violent crimes, only 16 incidents per month. Traffic safety, 50.5 incidents per month on average, again, based on 2014 data. And arrests, 715 arrests per month, again, on average. So when you click on one of these buttons, and this happens to be the first one up at the top left, answer time, 5.1 seconds, as you click on that tile, you would see this screen. So this gives some explanation, and this is, the goal of the dashboard project is not to present numerical data without context, but to make it easy to look at, easy to understand, and as you click through with the mouse, present that context of what does it mean? So the idea is for the layperson that may not be part of the city's structure and may not hear the explanations that we discuss in budget meetings and other times that we go through this, very easy to look at and to understand. So the goal here is to answer emergency calls within 15 seconds 95% of the time, and it's based on data from January to December 2014. This is the dispatch center at Verdugo Fire Communication. And you can see here, less rounding than on the tile on that main screen here. The final result, 5.13 seconds based on 2014 data out of a goal of 15 seconds, so very much exceeding that goal.
I would also, I would also indicate that, to the extent that you'll see some cities not want to report data because they're afraid of that data being used against them. And you don't want to tell the public necessarily fully what's going on, because what happens when you didn't achieve that goal? Again, the perspective is important, that no one indicator tells you everything about the department. So to the extent that the council and the community, for that matter, takes a measured view and saying, okay, well, if you went over the target, let's understand why, and be able to step back and say, sometimes you're not going to meet the goal, but it's important to understand why you're not meeting that goal, and then what do you have to do to course correct? What we have instructed all of our departments is to not be afraid of the numbers. The scoreboard is what it is, and we have to tack from that and learn from that. And so we want to make sure that as we provide this information, that's the context, both from the community as well as the council and the management group as well, everybody understands. Don't be afraid of the data because it is, you are what the scoreboard says you are, and you have to get better from there.
Again, some additional information. This is scrolling down from this screen, and I'll show some of this live in just a moment. And this shows the graph of answer time for calls in a 24-hour span. Also shows answer time for calls received by month. So tracks that data month by month throughout the year, gives you more than a number, and that's one of the differences from the data that we were publishing before, which was a metric that was the calculation based on internal data. This gives you quite a bit more of the internal data that's used to make that calculation. And that's where that term transparency comes from and what we're trying to achieve This is a metric from the police department measuring arrests. And again, same thing, as you click on that first button on the main page, you'll get this context, this definition. So it will explain, this is measured by tracking average arrests made per month from January to December 2014. And as you click through here, scrolling down from here on the screen, some additional information, arrests made by type. So felonies is a very small portion of the arrests, most of which are misdemeanors. And then on the right-hand side, that graph, the different numbers of felony and misdemeanor arrests made month by month throughout the year. So again, that background information, where did that metric come from, greater context and explanation of what that means. In community development, for the economic vibrancy council priority, we're measuring several different things, running through them very quickly. In the permit services center, an average of 2,888 customers per month being served. For business registration certificates, for new certificates, an average of 58 being issued per month. And for building permits, an average of 449 being issued per month. Our next screen is going to show us here again, as we click on one of these buttons for building permits in particular, you'll get more data there, you'll get an explanation. This is measured by tracking the average number of building permits processed from January through December. I think that's a typo. We probably have not collected data through December 2015 yet. And then again, as you scroll down from here, permits processed by type from January through February 2015, that sounds a little bit better, the different types of permits that are issued and what numbers, building permits, electrical permits, plumbing permits. So quite a bit more data backing up that metric, which we have been publishing for quite some time, but without the graphs and without the context. Okay, that is the end of my PowerPoint presentation. I'll take any questions, and I can jump into the site and show some additional screens live.
Questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Freedom?
This is terrific. I'm really glad to see all of this information online in such an easy-to-access and understand way. Are there any plans to expand on this? Is this the end of it, or does it keep growing as, as time goes by and technology changes or priorities change?
Councilmember Friedman, thank you for asking. Yes, this is very much just the beginning. So as we cover the 10 council priorities that we have and that we publish metrics on now, this is just a start. So we've covered budget, which is financial responsibility, pretty thoroughly, actually, for that module, economic vibrancy, which are the community development numbers, and safe and healthy community, which are the fire and police department numbers. safe and healthy community, which are the fire and police department numbers. Even then, we've only covered a subset of the numbers that are available, that we're already measuring, that we're already publishing on our transparency page in that longer PDF document. So, over time, we'll be expanding the metrics that we're publishing for the departments that we're already covering, as well as adding those other council priorities and the key metrics that support those priorities and show what the city is accomplishing.
And as we go forward, what you'll see in the coming year through the International City Management Association is participation in their insights program, where we can compare our numbers to other like-sized cities across the country that participate, some several hundred cities. And so, when we talk to the community about value, again, one dataset by itself may not mean anything, but if you compare that to another entity, another municipality, and say, well, this is what we get for our tax dollar in Glendale, what do you get? Well, I think that helps you as policymakers say, well, maybe we should get into this business more, get out of this other business entirely, or move forward with some new endeavor. So, we will have that information for you.
And when do you expect the all 10 priorities to be on the website?
That is a wonderful question, and will depend on some staffing and resources, as well as how quickly we can work with the departments to get the supporting data that we need to provide that context and that explanation. So, I would say it's going to be an ongoing effort, based on the number of metrics that we have citywide, and over time, you're going to see more buttons, more tiles on this website, and more supporting data within each one.
Our aspirational goal would be to add a tile a year at least, if not two.
And when is, Brian, when is this going to be up and running? Is it on now?
This is live now.
Live now, so it's, anybody in this room can go to it, and when they get home and look at it. Okay. I just want to say one thing, I'm not a computer whiz, so this looks pretty easy to me, if it works as easily as you're saying. And I think the most amazing part of it is that the statistics are so clear, and it gives us a picture of exactly what the police department does, all, you know, all year, once a month, monthly, and it's, I think it's a revelation to some of us. So, thank you for setting all this up. Brilliant.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Brian, this is very, very good. I have a question on, well, let's look at the traffic safety, where you're measuring incidents per month. And clearly, we've had a lot of issues with traffic safety, and council has in the past and continues to implement different measures to try and prevent these from happening. Do we have one of those graphs on this tile that would show, in other words, we want to measure our success? We put, you know, we have flags out, we have public service announcements out, we have little glow sticks that I've seen. Is there a way that we can measure the success of those tools through this, through this process, through this website? So, do you have one of those graphs like you do for, you know, the answer time or arrests, you know, the felony and misdemeanor arrests for, for traffic? Is that what it, that's it?
Thank you, Councilmember.
Very good, okay.
Trying to figure out what happened there.
The photos are excellent and somewhat distracting at times, but the data, yes, very much, and I would say that the disadvantage that we have now is we started with the most recent year data that we have. So, certainly, we're showing here traffic collisions with injuries by month from January 2014 through December 2014. I would say, based on my technology background, that this is not enough data to make any conclusion. But over time, as we go forward, we'll be adding data to keep this current, and we'll be adding historical data, and I think that will show the progress that the city's making in addressing the issues that you mentioned.
Okay, that's, I appreciate that. The other thing is the, you know, the clarity of the, you know, we want to be as transparent as possible, and I don't want to take issue with any particular measure, but one of the measures was answering emergency calls. So, our average is 5.13 seconds. So, I think it's safe to say, my understanding is that if I were to pick up my cellphone now and to call 911, I would not be in touch with Verdugo Dispatch in 5.1 seconds. I'm routed through another, through another agency, right? CHP, I understand, takes, takes these calls, and then CHP makes the connection to Verdugo Fire? Is that, can someone correct me on that? So, my, so my only point is that the residents are thinking, and I'm thinking, wow, just five seconds to do that. It should say five seconds upon contact through the, through a landline, I presume, through calling the 911 on a landline, or through a connection from the administering agency of the cellphone calls.
Councilmember.
So, it's a little confusing, I mean, as, I wish it was 5.1 seconds, and I know that in Verdugo Dispatch, they grab it as soon as their phone starts ringing, but in reality, there may be a circuitous route for folks to get to Verdugo Dispatch, depending on the type of device that they, that they use.
Understanding that the average is still 5.13 seconds, regardless of the medium being used. So, for, sometimes, depending on whatever technology may be available, maybe less, maybe more, but the average here, and again, the idea is to give you an indicator, not to give you a definitive, according to Hoyle, this is exactly what happens.
To measure trends.
But that's what you're looking at over a period of time. Because you're right, that can end up becoming misleading if all you were going to do is focus on that one bit of information.
Because I'm sure there will be naysayers who will, you know, try to accuse us of sugarcoating our numbers, but as long as we know that, okay, thank you very much.
So, do we have more demonstration? Or? I think, based on the questions, we've probably covered quite a bit of the website.
Okay.
I'm happy to show more, if there are more suggestions. Otherwise, I will introduce our next speaker.
Well, I'll say a few words before you do that. Is the next speaker going to speak on the same issue?
The technology latest project.
Okay, well, let's, let's stay on this. So, a little less than a year ago, when I'd seen the Los Angeles city's version of this, I raised the issue at city council meeting, asking, why don't we have one, and how do we get one? And so happy that I was told that the staff was already on it, and had a vision of how we were going to make information readily available to our residents in an understandable and meaningful way. And I think overall, whatever reservations we may have about some technical aspects of it, or whether it's 5.13 or 5.14, I think we all agree that this is a very good platform. This is not just spewing out information, data out there and saying, hey, listen, residents, it's there. Now, it's incumbent on you to figure out what the hell it says. This, you can go to, and you can click on things, and actually see information that's meaningful and useful, and you can get useful information about how the city of Glendale operates and what our statistics are. So, great start, and given the fact that this is expandable, this information can grow and become more detailed and even more user-friendly, it's very good, and I think our residents will be very happy with it. So, job very well done. Congratulations.
I think, as Mr. Ochoa spoke of, this is definitely just a beginning, and I think one of the important lessons that we've learned along the lines of several of the questions is that clarifying, defining what this data means is challenging. And over time, as we continue to grow the data, we'll continue to clarify exactly what this means, based on the feedback that we receive.
Right, and in fact, you're, I was so impressed with the presentation two weeks ago, that I jumped the gun, and I, you know, included in my State of the City address, because I was excited, and I wanted the residents to know that we're working to always improve our transparency, and make sure that our residents understand that the city functions only for them and no other reason, and no other purpose. So, thank you.
I'd like to introduce Sona from the Community Development Department to introduce our Public Property Portal.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Sona Meradian, and I work in the City of Glendale Community Development Department. Tonight, we would like to announce and demonstrate the launching of the City of Glendale Property Information Portal, a website which will display property information to the public quickly and efficiently over the internet. This portal will provide real-time zoning and permit history information to the customers of our properties in the City of Glendale. So, I'm going to go to the City of Glendale homepage and show you how you can access this portal. First, in your web browser, you can type in glandelca.gov, and it will take you to the City of Glendale homepage. There's several ways you can access this portal. First, you can go to Government, select Community Development Department, and as you scroll down, you see a green oval button which says Property Information Portal. If you click on this, it will take you to the portal. You may also go into How-To-I and select Property Information, and when you select this, it'll take you to the portal. This is the portal. Once you get on the portal site, it's very easy to navigate. You click in the search box up in the right-hand corner, and for demonstration purposes, I'm going to select an address, 207, good. You can either click on the magnifying glass or hit the enter button. Once the system uploads the information, you can see the pin of the address, where it's located on the map, and on the left-hand column side, you can see the information that's accessible for this property. For example, with this property, we have zoning information, assessor's information, permits, licenses, and cases. To expand on the information, you simply click, and it will display. And to close it, you just click it again, and it will close. For example, permits, you can see several permits, and these are organized per department and in chronological order, so you can select each one, and it will display information on the permits. If you're unable to find your property, you can select Help, and you could select Contact Us and Inform Us, what property you're looking for, and staff will be able to assist you. The assessor's information also is updated quarterly from the Los Angeles County Assessor's If you have no more questions on this site, also, one more thing in the search button, I've entered an address, but you can search by APN, license, permit number. This is, the information uploaded on this website is the information each department that has permits has allowed, so it's, I believe.
It's from 2011.
2011, because it's information that we've gathered through CSI.
Okay.
Yes.
And how quickly do you put the information on? How quickly after a permit is pulled, does it end up on the website?
These are permits that have been issued, finalized, and approved, so once it's in CSI, I believe.
The data is live.
It's live, real-time information.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Weaver.
So, if someone has. A resident has a question about a garage next door, and perhaps, you know, they feel that something's been done to the garage that shouldn't be done, they can go to the website, enter the address, and if there's a permit, it'll be there?
Absolutely, if the property shows up, they can click on permits and see whether that property has a permit, if it's been issued or approved.
Terrific, thank you.
After 2011, or all permits going back? I think that was the original question.
2011 is when they started entering the information, because the information prior to the CSI is filement.
The information prior to 2011 that came from KIVA has been transferred?
Irma, Irma from CSI worked on this project, so, I mean, so.
Hi, to answer that question, we have transferred any legacy data that was prior to City Services Interface System that has been transferred, will show up, and you may see information prior to 2011.
So, permit from 1977.
But then permits, of course, prior to having any electronic database system, would be in paper format, and it's not going to show up here. This is only electronic permitting system. Yeah.
If no further questions on this portal, there's another presentation, again, I'd like to.
We do have.
Oh, okay.
Yes, Mr. Weaver.
A rash of calls coming in, people turning the neighbors in, you know, that's going to happen, now that every property will be accessible. People are going to look at that data, and you're going to see a difference in the calls coming into the city. But that's not a bad thing, I guess.
We want to make sure that we provide the information as efficiently as possible.
It might be a little less, because I know now, I probably get two or three emails a week of people asking if I can find out for them without using their name, if one of their neighbors or a house they drove by has a permit for a window replacement or an addition, so now I can refer them to this.
Yes.
So, they can get that information right away, which is great.
The current information is, you come in, you fill out a property information request form, and it could take up to 10 days to get you the information. So, this is real-time and more efficient, at the comfort of your home, basically.
And even if it turns out that there is a rash of phone calls and complaints and such, the importance of having this information available to our residents far outweighs any such risk. So, I think we, I feel very comfortable with us going public with, and making this information available to our residents.
The next item I wanted to talk about is also on the City of Glendale homepage, and again, once you're on the homepage, this item is requesting inspections online. The current system, you have to make a phone call, leave your information, what type of inspection you're requesting, and the staff needs to listen to the phone calls and schedule an appointment. This way, you go into How-To-I, once you go to the homepage of City of Glendale webpage, and you select Inspection Request, Request Permit Inspections, under Learn About, it's a new heading. So, once you enter this form, as you can see, you type in your permit number, your address, the day, the time you want, if you want an AM or PM inspection, and then it goes through the subcategories of whether it's exterior, interior, tenant improvement, and very detailed, whether it's building, what type of building, plumbing, HVAC, mechanical, electric. The good thing about this is, once you enter your email address, you get the same exact email that staff gets to schedule the appointment yourself, so you have a copy of what inspection you requested. This portal makes it very efficient to schedule these appointments and have inspectors be notified. If you have any questions on this.
The final touch on this, on this feature will be commonly asked questions for the type of inspection that you're requesting, so that you'll know if you, if you're doing a block wall, will you need a survey, will you not? What types of details? Do we often get the general types of questions, just to edify the customer before they ever request that? Because what we don't want to do is have a customer take time off from work to be there at the property to get the inspection, and find out, an inspection can't take place because they were not fully prepared, because they didn't know. So, especially for our homeowners who are doing projects themselves, we want to make sure that we maximize utility of their time. That will be forthcoming, but we wanted to get this program up and running first and foremost.
Yes, and that's where the comment part is, if an owner doesn't know, but they've made all these selections, they can enter in here, I'm not sure this is what I selected, but this is what I'm requesting, and staff will contact them and clarify. If there are no further questions, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, one last bit. Oh, sorry, one last bit. I have a video for the first presentation. It's a How-To video, and it's accessible through the City of Glendale homepage, so you could see the information, property information portal.
The City of Glendale's Community Development Department now offers an online property portal tool to assist individuals in finding important information about Glendale properties. This tool is a valuable resource for anyone conducting research about a property. Someone looking to purchase a new home, for example, would be able to gather important clues and insight into the property's history before making a purchase. Here's how to do it. Visit the City of Glendale website at glandelca.gov. Go to How-To-I and select Property Information. Once you have entered the Property Information homepage, you are ready to begin your search. You may use a property address, APN number, or permit number. Enter that information in the search field in the upper right-hand corner. If an exact address is not found, your search will display the closest matches under the Address tab. Select the correct property address. Your results will show the property's location on a map. You may switch your map to satellite view if you prefer by clicking on the square at the lower-left-hand corner of the map. Now that you have found the address you're interested in researching, you can use the arrows to the left to access details about the property, including permits that have been issued, and more. We hope the Property Information Portal will help you get the information you need quickly and efficiently. If you have any questions about the portal, or if you need assistance, please contact us directly at 818-548-3200, and our customer service staff will be happy to help you.
Ms. Friedman has a question.
I have a question. It's maybe a loaded question. Is this also gonna show stop work orders?
Is this gonna, stop work orders?
So, I see the construction down the block, I go to the portal, and it's not been permitted. Will it tell me if there's a stop work order that's already been issued?
I don't believe so. I think Jan could answer that question for you.
Hi, Jan Edwards, Building Official. This portal will only show the status of the permits issued, or if they've been finalled. It won't show anything in between. So, while a project is under construction, you won't see inspection requests, you won't see any correction notices, or stop work orders. If a permit has not been issued for a property and they're doing construction work without permits, that might show up in the Neighborhood Services case, the code compliance cases, but only if a case has been opened. Beyond that, you won't be able to see the specific information.
Okay.
And, and again, it's all approved and issued and finalled at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I did wanna clarify one of your earlier questions. The permit data that's shown is what is in the electronic system. It's only accurate for 2011 and more current. Prior to that, the information was converted from a different database, and some of the information transferred over incompletely. So, for permits prior to 2011, if you don't see it, it doesn't necessarily mean that one wasn't issued, it's just that it's not in this current database. You would have to contact our office and get our archived files to verify whether or not a permit was really issued for what you're looking for prior to 2011.
Is that information on the site, so that people know that if it's before 2011?
There is a note, information on that in the disclaimer.
Great.
And I understand this is just a matter of funding, right? If we had, in an ideal world, we had enough funding, we could transfer or convert even that information into, into this database.
To some degree, yes. To some degree, you could recreate it, and I think we'll be looking at the profile of requests that we get, and if there is a huge demand for archived information, then at some point, we may have to come to the City Council and say, "We need to spend perhaps significant resources to, to go back and recreate that data, to literally transfer it from an old archived microfiche onto, onto an electronic copy." But, we'll cross that bridge as we get there.
The system does not eliminate the paper requests, so you could still, if you want information on a property that doesn't show up, you could still do a paper request. Thank you.
Thank you, Sona. Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Next presentation is the North Glendale Infrastructure Projects Public Works.
Mr. Mayor, Member City Council?
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm very pleased to report on infrastructure improvement projects that we have completed over the last several years, but in the interest of time, I will highlight those completed in the last two years. As you saw from Mr. Ganley's presentation on the MPG, we have a very robust capital improvement project, an investment in our critical infrastructure, and we have dedicated a good portion of that within the neighborhoods in North Glendale. So, without further ado, as you can see on the slide, projects that we completed in fiscal year 2013 to 14. The first one was a Safra2 school improvement project, Phase 4 of this program, that we receive federal grants for, and within North Glendale, the improvements that were completed were focused at and around Donsmore Elementary and Verdugo Woodlands Elementary Schools, and consistent of shortening the distance between the curb ramps for students to walk to school, as well as paving around the schools and providing a continuous uninterrupted path to certain schools. We have also painted the crosswalks in the latest regulated design and standard, which are the zebra or high visible crosswalks. We also completed another phase, Phase 2 of the Safra2 school improvement. This one in the, in the North Glendale area focused around Lincoln Elementary School, and primarily at the intersection of New York Avenue and El Toro. These projects cost almost $400,000 each. The next project you see on the list is the fiber optic communication gap closure for information exchange network expansion. This took place along Foothill, New York, Honolulu, La Croceana, and Verdugo, essentially closing the communication gap between our traffic signal system, so we can provide an improved coordination and signalization, not only within the City of Glendale, but with our neighboring agencies. And this has enabled us to install video detection systems on our traffic signals. And we have done a way, we have completely replaced the hardwire network with fiber optic lines. Then the next project is the citywide bicycle facilities project. This was the first phase that comprised of bicycle sharrows, and bike lanes, and racks, and other facilities within the city. The one location that was part of North Glendale was the sharrows that we installed on Honolulu Avenue between Boston and Orange Dale. The last project that we completed in that fiscal year was quite a large project for this type of program, our fiscal year 2012-13 Slurry Seal Program, in the tune of almost $2 million that concentrated on slurry sealing, primarily residential streets within the area hatched and marked as Number 5 on this map. As for fiscal year 2014 and 15, we completed another fiscal, another slurry seal program and pavement repair. This was for $1.3 million, and the area that it covered, area covered, is within North Glendale, and it's hatched and marked as Number 6. Canyatta Boulevard Infrastructure and Honolulu Avenue Improvement Project, though technically Canyatta Boulevard is not part, is not considered part of North Glendale, it's a very important thoroughfare that connects the two sides of the city together, and it was over a $10 million project that included water mains, sewer mains, new storm rain facilities, paving, obviously sidewalks, curb ramps, and rehabilitation of the pavement on the side of the street. This project is wrapping up, and we should be completed within the next two, three weeks. And the last project we completed last year is the Verdugo Road and Honolulu Avenue intersection signal modification and traffic signal upgrades. This was to provide a more improved pedestrian safety and visibility for motorists, and use the video detection signal systems at the intersection, and reduce the turning radius. As for the future, next year, we are currently working on Pennsylvania Avenue Rehabilitation Project. This is a joint project with LA County. Half of, the west side of Pennsylvania Avenue is within the Glendale, the City of Glendale jurisdiction, and the other half in the county, and it goes from the 210 freeway all the way to Markridge Road. This is over a $1.6 million project. It will include pavement rehabilitation, sidewalk repairs, curbs and gutters, traffic signal upgrades, crosswalks, tree planting, et cetera. And in the following year, fiscal year 2016 and 2017, we are planning a project along Ocean View Boulevard and Verdugo Boulevard. This is a $1.9 million project. It goes from Verdugo Road to Northern City Limit, joint line just north of Honolulu Avenue. And as part of the planning for this project, we have implemented a temporary pilot program for a potential diagonal crosswalk at the intersection of Ocean View and Honolulu, and currently collecting data to verify its effectiveness. The following project is another Safra2 school, Phase 3, and this will concentrate physical improvements around the Valley View Elementary School and the Chamlean School at Lowell. And last but not least, and this is the La Croceana Avenue Rehabilitation Project, from Verdugo Road to the city limit, just south of the 210 freeway, and this is your typical repaving, sidewalk repair, tree planting, signal, traffic signal upgrades, and crosswalks.
Probably worth noting at this point, council had requested, or directed, rather, that the item that Mr. Golanyan referenced at Ocean View, Honolulu, come back to you on April 7th for the removal of that pilot program, particularly now that we've collected about 30 days' worth of data, and so, if the council will give us that direction next Tuesday, then we'll be removing that pilot post haste.
Okay, very well. Any questions for Mr. Golanyan?
Actually, I have...
Oh, you have more stuff?
If I may, very quickly. Yeah, I wanted to share this map with you, that pictorially shows all the projects within the North Glendale area, and as you can see, geographically, they're spread out equally amongst all the areas within the North Glendale.
You have some photos in our package. Did you show those on the screen?
I will.
Okay.
Thank you for the reminder.
They're nice photos, so, good to see what's happening.
So, if I may share some before and after photos? Thank you, Councilmember Friedman. This is part of the Canyatta Boulevard Infrastructure Improvement Project. The pavement was completely rehabilitated with an environmentally friendly cold-in-place recycling. We didn't haul off any existing pavement. We used whatever was on the street for the new pavement, and we saved at least $630,000 in costs, not to mention gas emissions. This is part of the Safra2 school improvements project, Phase 2 around Lincoln Elementary. You can see the high visibility zebra crosswalks, as well as the dual curb ramps, as opposed to single one that was originally there, and, of course, paving around the school. And last but not least, Verdugo and Honolulu Avenue intersection signal modification project. You see the stamped, nice colored stamped crosswalk, asphalt crosswalks, signal upgrades, paving, and a new median, and shortening the right turn lane. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, Mr. Najarian?
Where the, did you mention where the funds are coming for all these projects?
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. The majority of the funds that we have used for this particular project was the HSIP Highway Safety Improvement Program. It was a federal grant that we received. We, for Canyatta Boulevard project, we have used gas tax and Measure R funding, and the slurry seal programs have been primarily gas tax funded. Safra2 schools, obviously, are federal and state-funded programs.
And going forward, these are all in our capital improvement budget in one form or another?
Yes, sir. We bring those to you for your review and consideration annually.
And going, I'm sorry, and going forward, we have nominated Ocean View Boulevard to receive Measure R funding, and we are waiting the approval from Metro.
Okay. Actually, that was my question, is what, what project would you do next if you had the funding?
Ocean View Boulevard.
And so, it's very good. We're right on that, very good.
For several years now, at least, probably seven or eight years, this council has constantly put traffic safety at the very top of its priorities, and I'm glad to see that so much effort and funding has gone into traffic safety and pedestrian safety. And I, I think it's, for the first time, very, very noticeable when I drive all over Glendale, the north part of Glendale, the south part of Glendale, you're really starting to see a critical mass of upgraded intersections, road markings, signal modernizations, and all sorts of improvements that aren't just about making things prettier, but that are really about making the roads safer for all the users of the road. So, I commend your department for its work, and it's, it's really becoming very noticeable now, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Golanyan, and your job well done. Next item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The council's next item is the Mayor's Challenge for Safer People and Safer Streets
Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, just to follow up on the comments that Councilmember Friedman mentioned earlier, it's, traffic safety, pedestrian, bicycle safety is very important to your body, and it has been for a number of years, and as such, we are embarking and we're requesting to join the Mayor's Challenge for Safer People and Safer Streets The Mayor's Challenge for Safer People and Safer Streets was a call to action by U.S. Department of Transportation Secretary Anthony Fox in January 2015, for mayors and local elected officials to take significant action to improve safety for bicycle riders and pedestrians. There was a Mayor's Challenge kickoff event held in Washington DC a couple of weeks ago. To date, over 200 agencies have joined the challenge, and on the local level, it includes the cities of Santa Monica, Culver City, Santa Ana, and Los Angeles. Essentially, mayors are challenged to issue a public statement about the importance of bicycle and pedestrian safety, form a local action team to advance safety and accessibility goals, and take local action on seven challenge activities. However, there's flexibility to focus on those areas that can use the most attention instead of all of the recommended activities. Challenge cities win by improving walking and biking that contributes to the health, safety, environmental, transportation, and quality of life for its community members. Here in Glendale, at the direction of the City Council, we have formed the Pedestrian Safety Task Force, whose goals are completely aligned with those outlined in the Mayor's Challenge. The committee has already met several recommendations that were adopted by City Council in October 2014, and we are now in the implementation stage. Also, in 2012, a bicycle advisory committee was formed that helped generate the city's bicycle transportation plan. So, what are the challenge activities? Activity number one, take a complete streets approach, which means to consider walking and bicycling as equals with other modes of transportation. We currently follow the complete streets approach in the design of our CIP projects and public works, which includes curb extension, bicycle lanes or sharrows, bicycle detectors, pedestrian warning lights, in roadway safety lights, and high-visibility crosswalks and signage, just to name a few. Activity number two is identify and address barriers to make streets safe and convenient for all road users, including people of all ages and abilities, and those using assistive mobility devices. In the City of Glendale, we have been systematically implementing an annual curb ramp installation on sidewalks... and sidewalk repair program to address these barriers in accordance with the latest ADA standards, in addition to the installation of transit stops and bicycle racks where feasible. We have also been using Safratu school grants, as you saw in my previous presentation, to provide infrastructure improvements around 12 schools already, as well as outreach and education for students who walk or bike to school. We are planning to start the design of improvements for another five schools in the next few months with a $1.2 million grant. Activity number three: Gather and track biking and walking data. The goal here is to routinely collect walking and bicycling data to be able to track trends and prioritize investments to ensure the success of new facilities. Since 2009, and every other year after, we have been conducting pedestrian and bicycle counts at select locations throughout the city with the help of volunteers. Our police department continually comply, compiles traffic accident data involving pedestrians and bicyclists, and our traffic engineers use them to design the most appropriate safety improvements and transportation facilities. Challenge number four: Use designs that are appropriate to the context of streets and its uses. Agencies are encouraged, when possible, to avoid designing walking and bicycling facilities to the minimum standards. Planning projects for the long term should anticipate likely future demand for bicycling and walking facilities and not preclude the provision of future improvements. As I noted earlier, we have been using the collected data to design transportation facilities and incorporate safety elements as an integral part of our CIP projects. We will continue to sort through the existing resources, such as FHWA informational guide, to implement features for speed reduction and decrease in accidents, and the opportunity to provide improved accommodations for pedestrian and bicyclists. For example, we are currently finalizing the design of modifications to the median on Glenox Boulevard at Western Avenue, above and beyond the minimum standards, to make it safer for pedestrians to cross at this intersection, which, according to our police data, has one of the highest rates of pedestrian accidents in the city. Challenge activity five: Take advantage of opportunities to create and complete pedestrian bicycle networks through maintenance. What this says is that agencies should find ways to make facility improvements for pedestrian bicyclists during resurfacing and other maintenance projects. Again, in Glendale, since 2012, we have been implementing the recommendations in the bicycle transportation plan as part of our pavement maintenance and rehabilitation projects, be it resurfacing or slurry sealing. As Councilmember Friedman mentioned, you see examples of this work in recently completed Central Avenue, Glendale Avenue, and Canyatta Boulevard resurfacing projects. We're also anxiously waiting to receive $500,000 in active transportation program grant funds to start working on creating a pedestrian safety action plan with recommendations for a safer pedestrian connectivity network. Challenge number six: Improve walking and biking safety laws and regulations. This activity is related to enhancing local laws, codes, and ordinances to further protect non-motorized transportation users, and to consider laws related to yield, safe passing, bike lighting requirements, distracted driving, and bicycle helmet use. Almost all of these recommended laws pertaining to bicyclist and pedestrian safety are contained in the California Vehicle Code, which our police officers routinely enforce. As an example of the newest law is AB 1371, that mandates a three-foot separation when passing bicyclists on the road, which went into effect recently. And the last challenge is educate and enforce proper road use behavior by all. Agencies are encouraged to have comprehensive programs to effectively reduce pedestrian and bicyclist injuries and fatalities through regular and consistent education and enforcement. In Glendale, we, the police department, the city manager's office of communications and community relations, and the public works department have been providing outreach programs and materials that include presentations at senior centers and schools and local civic organizations, community workshops, PAs on GTV6, accident reenactments, Bike to Work Day, the month of October designation, et cetera. We have also been able to secure another $500,000 in grant funding that will go toward enhancing our education and outreach to drivers, pedestrians, and bicyclists in the near future. Our police department has been actively enforcing safety laws targeting motorists and, motorists and pedestrian, and cyclists alike. As a newer example of education is the pedestrian flag program that we have implemented at two uncontrolled crosswalks in the city so far. Moving forward, we will register the city of Glendale for the Mayor's Challenge. We will monitor the data and use Department of Transportation's resources. We will actively examine new technologies and seek grant opportunities to implement the newest safety recommendations. And with that, I will ask the mayor to issue a public announcement. And in closing, as you can see, the city of Glendale has for years and will continue in the future to plan, design, and implement traffic engineering improvements, and will coordinate the education and enforcement activities with the police department and the pedestrian safety task force, as well as the community members, to create a safer environment for pedestrian and bicyclists using our streets and transportation facilities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Golanyan. Now, before I make the statement, I'd like to say a few words about this issue. This issue is obviously not foreign to us, it's not new to us. In January, at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, Secretary Fox revealed some very dramatic statistics about the increasing rate of accidents involving pedestrians and bicyclists throughout the country. And this, this rate is apparently very consistent, despite the fact that it may seem that this is happening in Glendale more, more often than in other places. And it's clearly a result of our over-reliance on the motorist culture. We have become so reliant on driving cars, and we, yes, we do think that somehow a person driving a car on a street has more rights than a cyclist riding on the side of the street. And that's something that we need to change. All the, the measures that were outlined by Mr. Golanyan will go a long way to changing the culture in our own city. One where, just a month ago, we experienced another fatality, where a little kid, four-year-old kid, was hit by an automobile. Now, in this case, it's not clear as to what, who was at fault, but nevertheless, it's, this is a phenomenon that happens periodically in our city, and we're all very concerned about it. And so, to that effect, here's my challenge. As the well-being of pedestrians and bicyclists remain of the utmost concern to me and my colleagues on the Glendale City Council, I, Zara Sinanian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby affirm our commitment to make Glendale streets and sidewalks safe, convenient, and accessible for all users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, and those using personal mobility devices. I strongly urge city staff to continue to seek out grants, new technology, educational programs, and other opportunities to improve transportation, safety, and mobility throughout the city. With the sustained dedication of the Glendale community, including schools, businesses, residents, as well as bicyclists and pedestrian advocates on this issue, I'm confident that considerable progress can be made. That's it. I do have a quick question for you, Mr. Golanyan. Are we doing some prep work on having our own bicycle and pedestrian events, something like a Cicluvia, but our own? Because I understand Cicluvia, if they want to come to Glendale, it's going to cost way too much. But that shouldn't stop us from having our own indigenous day in the most central street of, I mean, we need to make a statement on the most, the busiest and the most central street in Glendale on a weekend to, to make everyone understand that, listen, this is important for us, and we're all committed to it. I'm sure people will turn out, I'm sure this will be a huge event, and it will instill the idea of promotion of safety for people, bicyclists, pedestrians in the city of Glendale. So, are we, are we working on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Very good question. Thank you for that. As a matter of fact, recently, representatives from TMA, Go Glendale, as well as the Chamber of Commerce Transportation Subcommittee approached me with a similar idea. They were planning on organizing a transportation event, and we are working on plans to expand that, to include traffic safety, pedestrian safety, bicycling safety. Sometime in September, it will be on one of our busiest streets, and Dan Bell of the city manager's office is working with me and the chamber, and Go Glendale, in planning and organizing the event.
Very well. And the city of Long Beach, I think, just announced their own initiative. They're going to shut down one of their major streets and have just a day for cyclists and pedestrians, because they have, I'm sure, the same types of problems as we do. Yes, Ms. Friedman?
And Ms. Devine?
Yes. I think the city is doing staff, and everything that we're doing for cyclist and pedestrian safety is, is going above and beyond. It's wonderful. I mean, everybody asks me, you know, what are we going to do? And I always tell them, we're doing so much. We can do more, of course. I would like to look at challenge number six, the, improving the laws. And I've recently been told that Los Angeles has adopted a, a standing reward fund on hit-and-run drivers. And I would like to ask my fellow council members if someone would like to second this, but I'd like to, our city, to look into a, a standing fund for those that witness hit-and-run drivers. And perhaps we could have either a $50,000 or a $25,000 standing fund for any information that leads to the arrest of a hit-and-run driver. I know we still have the cyclist that lost his leg. We still don't know who hit him, little Violetta. Fortunately, the driver turned himself in, but what if he hadn't? And what if somebody saw him and, and didn't come forward? And perhaps this would be a, a kind of a, a way of promoting to people, or getting people to, if they see something, to come forward. And also, would maybe influence drivers that are in this horrific situation to stop, knowing that someone might see them and turn them in. And so, I, I would like to look into a standing fund, reward for hit-and-run drivers.
Mr. Choa?
If it pleases the council, and certainly for the April 7th agenda, if it's the council's pleasure, we can put that on the agenda for you to discuss there, for the council to take an action.
Sure. She has my, yes.
Is that going to be enough time for staff to give us a report? Because I know there are some, there are some issues involved in that, and that might be quick, I think.
I think, to the extent that, again, we, I say it to sound like a bureaucrat, but to the extent we can't take action here, we would bring this to you to officially bless that as the council, and we would bring a report back to you at a suitable time.
You'll need to raise this issue again at the April 7th meeting.
Okay.
Then we can take action.
Fine.
Very well. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Friedman? A few quick comments. First, I want to commend the mayor for signing on to this, for issuing the challenge, and also for being interested in doing a Glendale version of Cicluvia. I think it's a great idea. Two things. First, I happened to have a conversation with the head of Cicluvia last week, and I'd like staff to, not, not a direction, but they mentioned that they have new funding that might be able to bring Cicluvia to Glendale for no cost to us. So, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but we should at least give them a call and check out what that actually means, whether that's really no cost or low cost, and whether they want to kind of throw that our way. And secondly, it's great to hear about all of the engineering, because it's important. People constantly ask about enforcement of our traffic rules, which is also a just-as-important part of the equation. And I want to circle back to the presentation about the dashboards, which is that I believe the dashboards have citations issued weekly, correct? So, people who are concerned that maybe we're not issuing enough tickets can go in our dashboard now. Is that right, Mr. Ganley? Does that up there on the website yet?
It will be on a quarterly basis.
So, on a quarterly basis, we can, you can see how many citations are actually being issued, which, when I looked at the number, it was a lot more than I thought we were issuing. It's thousands and thousands of traffic citations. So, just some, an FYI for the community, if you're interested in that information, take a look at that in our new dashboard. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Friedman. Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mr. Najarian.
I'm, I'm happy that we're all supporting the Cicluvia. I am, Cicluvia itself doesn't, doesn't have funding. They get their funding through groups, mainly Metro. And I'm, I want to assure you, this was, we raised this a couple of weeks ago. And so, I'm working on the votes to get a large chunk of money. And it's a little ugly watching that being done, but, but hopefully, we'll get some money in that. The other thing I would request, perhaps with the city manager's approval, is a brief, a brief lesson on how to properly and safely comply with AB 1371, the three-feet rule. And it's not just as simple as you would think. Well, you give the guy three feet. There's intersections, there are narrow streets, there are yellow lines, which do not permit, generally do not permit passing. So, if we could just have a brief primer, maybe Walk by Glendale wants to coordinate with, with the chief, or maybe make a video. That would be, you know, that would maybe be the best thing, because it's a little tricky. And I found myself, and I know the law, but there's cars coming at me. Do I stop? Do I impede traffic behind me? Or do I, do I give them two feet when I should be giving them three feet to get by? So, it's a great law for safety, but a little bit of help for the average motorist would be very helpful. And the last thing is, I saw at the city management services offices, lighted glow sticks. And I didn't play with one. I'm not sure if they're battery-operated, or they're, the phosphorescent. I think, I don't know where we got them from, but if we can get a large number, perhaps with a sponsorship by someone, and place them in certain locations for any resident that wants to have one, to be able to get up, no questions asked, get a stick. And that way, you know, the flags are good at certain intersections, but this way, anyone can just have one as they're walking at night, have that lighted stick to give just an extra level of safety.
We will be distributing those through community service centers.
And this would maybe fall into the, the efforts under the Mayor's Safety, what's it called? Mayor's Challenge for Safer Streets, Safer People. Whatever, well, let, you know, if, if money is an option, if money is an issue, please, oh, it's always an issue, right? But if we don't have sponsorship, or we need money, I'll, I'll be happy to look for money in different pots of funds.
I have a question for you. A little question for you about the funding from the MTA. Does the funding have to go through Cicluvia? Or if, let's say the funding isn't going to go to Cicluvia, it can still come to Glendale? I know they probably bring some expertise, since they've done it so many times.
They do. And Cicluvia, I think, is starting to gain an ownership of the Cicluvia. It might even be a brand, I'm not sure. But clearly, there's nothing that prevents the city of Glendale from obtaining the funds and managing it themselves.
Very well. Thank you. Okay. That's it on this item. Thank you for that presentation. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, council, next item, Montrose, 25. As Darlene Sanchez comes to the podium, just by way of preface, I can tell you that, as you know, Glendale's a very diverse place, and it's a relatively large place. It feels like a small town, but it is rather large. And as such, we have different districts where different things are appropriate. And to the extent that when we talk about economic development in downtown Glendale, it means one thing, but I think it's very important for us to be able to differentiate what happens, what economic development means, in Montrose in particular. And when you think of Montrose as probably having more in common with the historic, small-town, downtown districts of, of the San Gabriel Valley and the inland empire, as opposed to the hustling, bustling, urban nature of downtown Glendale, that, that embarkation point to say, okay, we're talking about economic development, a lot of the same challenges that affect all businesses, but in Montrose, it's just a little bit different. That recognition is really the genesis of the Vision 2020 program that the council blessed at the beginning of this current fiscal year as part of our department's strategic goals. And here with an update would be Darlene Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Choa. That was a great time saver as well. Good evening, mayor and council members. In simplified terms, the vision planning process will identify where Montrose is now, where Montrose wants to be five years from now, and what are the tools that could be put in place to achieve this? This is a creation of a business plan, one that is deliberate and tailored just for Montrose. A plan that ultimately answers, what can we do to get additional patrons to support this vibrant commercial district? to support this vibrant commercial district? A critical component to this plan is engaging with the many diverse groups and stakeholders within Montrose, from property owners, business owners, employers, shoppers. The end game of this would be a written document that articulates an economic development strategy built from a collective ideas of stakeholders. Sounds easy, but not as easy as it will be. Earlier this month, I did meet with some of these opinion leaders in Montrose, a group of people that included both property owners and business owners. These individuals were selected for their expertise and their ability to really focus in on larger themes with strategic planning. In addition to speaking with these stakeholders, I will continue to involve other property and business owners into the conversation, both in individual meetings and in larger group meetings. Right now, we're in the fact-finding stage. The steering committee members have been essential in starting the discussion at a high level. As we go from the conceptual side and narrow down to the themes of the plan, more expertise and input will be needed from the larger Montrose community. So let me show you what we've come up with so far. So as I mentioned, this is part of the, just the beginning. We've seen four major topics that continue to emerge. One is infrastructure, improvements to infrastructure, from building facades, trash cans, sidewalks. This has been very important in the conversations I've had. Placemaking. This is best described as the image and the ambiance of Montrose and the preservation of Montrose as a very unique area of the city. Marketing promotions is obviously been something that's been discussed. Thankfully, this is an area that is already expertly handled by our MSPA board, as well as the various chambers in this area. But I think moving into this next phase, we're going to look at an emphasis on social media. And the last thing, I think collectively, I can describe them as economic development. And these are tools that the city can provide, whether this is a land use, zoning, creating to create a different mixture of businesses, or we look at targeted recruitment. If we see a major vacancy in the area, working together to direct a specific tenant to that area. As well as connection to the job centers and housing within the Old Town region. We want to make that connection to the patrons that we have, whether they're employed in the area or they live in the area. So let me go back a bit. So let me highlight a little bit about the process for putting this plan together. As we gather the information, you've seen that there are some bigger themes that have emerged as common threads of conversation for what's important. The next part of this process will be to break down these themes and prioritize those actions and arrange for a field trip. As Mr. Ochoa said, Montrose is not downtown Glendale, it's not downtown LA. Maybe looking at places that are, there are similar characteristics. Some villages to the east, Claremont Village, they've done things with their signage. Old Town Monrovia has a trolley program. Housing in both Claremont and Covina has been adjacent to their Old Town districts. And then Abbott Kenny, which is really special place as well, they've done some great adaptive So at this point, I will continue to have these ongoing conversations with the steering committee members. From there, we look at creating a survey. CV Weekly has generously agreed to place that survey in their paper. And then we'll look at field trips to some of the places that were mentioned in these previous slides. Lastly, creating a deliverable that would come back to the city council, as well to the various boards and chambers. We recognize Montrose for the unique community that it is now, but I think as we work together, we can look at Montrose five years from now and provide the tools of a collective strategy for what Montrose could be. So those are, that's my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Really just an update as to where we are now, but this is something that the council had authorized us to go forward on, and we're making incremental, very slow progress so that we bring everybody along with us. Ultimately, it will go, as Darlene indicated, not just to the chambers, but to our DRB, our Planning Commission, our HPC, and ultimately to the city council, again, as a strategic planning document, something that will guide what happens both in land use development as well as marketing promotions for the next five years at least.
I've had conversations over the years with members of the chamber, with members of the MSPA. There's also some other areas that I hope that you are exploring, and I'm really glad that we're doing this. It's great to make sure that we're all in sync and that we can give whatever assistance that we need to give to those areas to move forward in the way that they want to move forward. That's unique and special to their area. I hope that you're bringing the property owners also along on these discussions. I know that's not always easy when it comes to downtown Montrose and to the MSPA. But I think we also, you also need to take a look at what the right vision is for that shopping district. What's the correct mix of restaurant with retail, for instance? Do they want to look at ordinances that would help to keep out things like fast-food restaurants on Honolulu? All of those are options that can be explored, so I hope that you're going to go that in-depth with the MSPA and with the chamber to explore all of those things so that, so that they're not blindsided, let's say, or that they don't wake up one day and it's 80% restaurant and 20% retail and can't sustain the retail. So I hope that that's all part of the visioning process.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. That's a great point because the impacts on retail in particular that are hitting, you know, Brand Boulevard are also hitting Honolulu Boulevard, are also hitting Indian Hill Boulevard in Claremont and Myrtle Avenue in Monrovia. And the idea of maintaining some degree of balance between destination retail and destination dining, as well as entertainment, and still be quaint and still be something that is unique to Montrose is no short order. And so the land use planning tools in particular are important, but also, how do you draw more people? Because if you get the people here to shop and dine and spend their dollars, a lot of the rest will grease the skids and be able to move more quickly. So absolutely right.
Right. And then also, I want to be sure that our new Economic Development Corporation that we've formed is there to support them in terms of their marketing efforts, so that we work with them. And whatever they do, we can magnify that and add the full weight of the Economic Development Corporation and the city of Glendale behind that marketing to make sure that we do that in conjunction with them in the way that's right for this area. Okay?
Thank you.
And so the first thing that pops into my mind is, we are so intent on making Glendale an 18-hour city. I'm not sure the folks in Montrose want an 18-hour city. Maybe 12 would suffice.
Absolutely.
So these are the sort of outreach issues we'd like to continue.
What's right for downtown Glendale isn't necessarily what's right for Montrose. And if the beginning of wisdom is to call things by their right names, the idea, the very, the very point that you just made is to say, and what Darlene is indicating, asking the question, what's right? What do you want? And then having to layer what is realistic. So that notion of see, think, know, that's the test that we apply because we see lots of things and we have thoughts about them, but truly, do we know, can we predict with any accuracy, if we spend these resources, which are scarce, spend the council's political capital, as it were, in terms of making policies, will these things occur the way we want them to occur? So that is an arduous task. So this process is a very slow-moving process, but it kind of has to be.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Next item, please.
Next item is North Glendale Open Space and Park Movement and Development Project Update.
Yes, Mayor Sanayan, members of the Glendale City Council, we are glad to have the opportunity to provide an update on some very exciting current and upcoming park projects in North Glendale. And whenever you're talking about park projects in North Glendale, you have to start with the northernmost park in the city, which is the Duke Magin Wilderness Park, which most of you know is comprised of 700 acres of open space and wilderness area. At its base, it's developed with parking lots, restroom buildings, a historic barn, the Le Mesagne Barn, a ranch house, picnic areas, and meadows, not to mention the trails, the abundance of trails into the San Gabriel Mountains. We, in terms of programs, we do have a community volunteer park restoration program that was initiated as a result of the station fire. And that park, I must say, has, has become restored in the best way that we could have imagined compared to what it looked like immediately after the fire. We do have ongoing interpretive programs that are available to our community and especially the children. In 2013, we added the park to our inventory, park venues available for reservations by the community. In 2013, we added an onsite caretaker to help us look after the park, who lives onsite. And in 2013, we started a volunteer safety patrol program. We have both a bike unit and a hike unit, helping us, again, take care of the park. In terms of current projects, we are currently working on plans and specifications to complete interior improvements of the barns so that we can finally convert it to the Nature Educational Center that we have been planning for a very long time. And the city council has appropriated the one and a half million dollars that we feel what suffice in finally completing the interior improvements of the barns so that we can begin using it as the educational center and also to make it available for reservation opportunities for the community. I'd like to switch over to the sports complex, which is 26, a 26-acre site comprised of two regulation-sized artificial turf soccer fields, three baseball fields, parking lots, sports offices, and two hiking trails, one of which is ADA accessible. In terms of our current projects, we are in the process, as we speak, of replacing two existing artificial turf fields. This project started on March 9th and will be completed by May 15th. The approximate cost of that project is $900,000, and that is all in enterprise funds, which is the fee-for-service funds that we collect for reservations of the fields. The benefits of artificial turf, we've talked about before, it's cost-effective to maintain. It provides environmental benefits in that it does not need water or fertilizer, and it allows for significant, significantly expanded use of the field for the community versus a natural turf field, which we would only be able to use for a limited time per day. Otherwise, it quickly turns into a dirt field. In terms of future projects, we are very excited to report, and again, the city council has authorized funding for a six-bay batting cage, which was actually part of the original master plan for the sports complex. And that's, the approximate project cost for that is between $300,000 and $400,000. And that will be in developer impact fee funding. The project, the current status is that we are preparing construction documents for the design and construction of the batting cage, which will be followed by a request for proposal for operation by a private concessionaire. The users will include all of our youth baseball leagues, the adult softball teams that already use the sports complex for their games, the Glendale Community College, local, public, and private high schools, and the general public. And the benefits of the batting cage is that we will provide a service to the Glendale athletic community that we have not had in a very long time. Our residents have to travel to Burbank and Pasadena to partake in any batting cage activity, so it will provide an alternative to baseball and softball practice and game rainouts. Oftentimes, when games are rained out, the batting cages remain open so that the users could still get their baseball energy out. This is the site location. It will be located adjacent to Field 1 and behind the current picnic pavilion. And this is a very rough concept of what a six-bay batting cage facility might look like.
Is this what you're all adding?
Yes. Yes.
We were trying to get Jeff to get out there, but it's arming what it used to be.
No. It'll be all computerized.
A little broken down.
I think two of the bays will be modified for softball, and the other two will be for fastball pitch.
A lot of grudges being settled in the batting cage.
Another future or planned project is the rehabilitation of the concession stand, a new roof and trellis replacement. This will cost approximately $500,000, and we're proposing the use of enterprise funds. And we will be submitting this as part of the 1516 budget, but it's time to replace the trellis because it's dry-rotted out and a real public safety concern.
Some years ago, four or five, at least, I talked to staff, I think it was Parks and Rec, about looking at Site B, long-term, to grade that out because we could almost double the capacity of the sports complex. I don't even see a long-range plan developed yet. Is that on the horizon? I'm not talking about the funding, I'm just saying to do the study. It's a cut-and-fill operation up there. I analyzed it before, and we could double the size of the sports complex, but I don't see anything at all.
Yes, Councilmember Weaver, as of this date, we have not taken the time or made an effort to initiate any significant study of Site A. I think you're referring to Site A, which is the, would be the next developer site at the sports complex area. We will, we will, from time to time, enter into discussions with proposals, but nothing more concrete than that for Site A.
I'd hope it'd be sooner than later because the need for athletic fields in this city is great, and we have the land. So we ought to, it should be on the horizon two or three years out. Because I already talked to staff five, six years ago. No movement at all. It's for the kids. So I hate to see we don't have anything and we're not even contemplating it for years. Doesn't make any sense. That's just my own opinion.
Sure, sure. That's a point well-taken. Hopefully, within the next couple of years, when we are done with the current priorities, we can focus our attention to Site A. Moving on to Dunsborough Park, another primary northern Glendale park. That's 9.8 acres comprised of one ballfield, two tennis courts, playgrounds, wading pool, community room, and restrooms. We recently completed replacement of the playground equipment at Dunsborough, which cost $342,000, and that was in developer impact fee funds. The current project, we're in the process, again, as we speak, of replacing parking lot and park lighting, and that's 64 light standards. So that's a big project, and that's cost of $496,000. Part of it, $300,000 in capital improvement program general funds and $196,000 leverage with enterprise funds. And that's at Dunsborough. Then moving on to Rockhaven, we get a lot of questions about Rockhaven and what's going on with Rockhaven. That's a 3.4-acre property located on Honolulu, bounded by Honolulu, Pleasure Way, Hermosa Avenue, La Crescenta. The city purchased the site for $8.25 million in 2008. On the site, currently, there are 13 buildings connected by a series of pathways and discreet garden areas that possess varying degrees of historic significance. The current status is that since the city acquired the site, the city has been providing very minimal landscape maintenance and cleaning of the property, making only urgently-needed repairs, such as termite inspections and fumigation, tarping the roofs, some perimeter fencing for security, et cetera. There is a nonprofit called Friends of Rockhaven that was formed to assist the city with light building maintenance and cleanup of the property, including furnishings, and they raise funds and provide guided select private tours of Rockhaven. And again, since acquiring this site, the site has been closed to the public, except for those select private tours and as approved by the Community Services and Parks Department. With the city's budget constraints, the Rockhaven site is not able to be developed by the city and the condition of the property continues to decline, and the property continues to be close to the public. As a result, the city staff, in conjunction with community stakeholders, determined the need to identify alternative funding and development scenarios for the site. And in April of last year, the city council authorized the issuance of an RFQ. With that goal, 10 RFQs were received, all called for adaptive With that goal, 10 RFQs were received, all called for adaptive reuse of the majority of the buildings. A community stakeholder committee met with staff and received a summary evaluation of each proposal, and the committee was asked to provide input. No consensus for approval was reached by the committee on any of the proposals, therefore that process was canceled. Moving on to the Verdugo Wash feasibility study. This is a study of the feasibility of repurposing and making improvements to create a recreational pathway along the wash, potentially stretching from La Crescenta all the way down to Riverwalk, which if it was totally built out, would comprise a 9.4-mile stretch. The Glendale Bicycle Master Plan that was approved by the city council in 2012, I did identify the Arroyo Verdugo as a top priority project to be considered. The current status is that staff is in the process of securing funding from Metro to pay for the feasibility study and just the study. Staff plans to issue an RFP to hire a consultant to perform that study, and the process of that study will definitely include a significant number of community meetings and workshops at different locations along the wash to get input. And we're looking at a six-to-nine-month process just to complete the study and then figure out where to go from there. This is a project that our department is working in collaboration with Community to Develop and the Transportation Section headed up by Alan Loomis, so Alan's actually the lead on this project. So Alan is here if you have any questions or would like more background in this project, as well as some other staff.
I would tell you that we probably get more questions about the status of that endeavor than really anything else that Jess has presented on, including Rock Haven. And at this point, I think folks are just anxious to see what's going to happen. At this point, as he indicates, there will be a feasibility study, but until and unless that actually occurs, there really is nothing to update. But in the absence of new information, I think there's consternation as to what's going to happen. So we will continue to update folks as we get the information, but I'm actually anxious to start the feasibility study, if only to satiate the, both anticipation as well as the concerns that different stakeholders have regarding the possibility of that project going forward. But at this point, there is nothing to report.
This isn't the only project on the horizon that seems to generate people's response that they're jumping to the gun. This is long-term. It's not happening tomorrow. There's other things I won't mention in this city, thinking we're going to do it tomorrow. No, it's a long process, and I doubt, since I handled the maintenance on this, on the Verdugo Wash, I doubt if you're going to see it look like it is here. I talked about doing this some 10 years ago. I'm glad it's finally happening, but people, you've got to understand, we're going to do a lot of community outreach, the feasibility, obvious thought tying it to the bike trails along the LA River, which I happened to permit all of them along the LA River 10, no, 20 years ago, I guess, to tie the Verdugo Wash into it with a continuation trail, made a lot of sense, getting the bicycles, everything off the public streets. It seemed very logical. Now we're getting closer, but don't anybody think it's going to happen next year until we do a lot of outreach? Correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I just have one question. How long did the artificial turf last at the sports complex? When was it installed? 20?
Councilmember Devine, exactly 10 years.
10 years, okay.
Yeah, that's the typical lifespan of artificial turf.
How often was it used?
I beg your pardon?
How often was that, those fields? Because I went up and looked at them, I believe, too often were they used? Seems like 24/7, every day. It was taking such a beating compared to what you might see on a lawn or something, right?
It cost us a fraction.
Yeah, yes.
And you mentioned Duke Magin and the improvements that have happened at Duke Magin, and I just want to emphasize, too, that the Parks and Open Space Foundation had a lot to do with that and the resources, the funds, to do a lot of work in our parks, and I think they need to be recognized for that, as well as your staff, of course. And my final question, comment is, you mentioned development impact fees, and I know we get a lot of questions every day about the development downtown. Would you explain to everyone what you mean by the development impact fees?
Yes, Councilmember Devine, developer impact fees are fees that developers pay when they propose a development project in the city of Glendale, and it's part of their permitting process. And I think roughly for every multifamily unit, it's about $18,000 per unit that goes towards parks, development of parks.
And that's all the development in the downtown-specific plan? And others?
And we're able to use it in the far north area, although the development is occurring in the downtown district, because it's an amenity for the entire community.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
It's regional draw.
And I'm glad you're putting in softball batting cages, so that the girls can go up there and practice as well.
Yeah, we were thinking the old broken-down, 40-something-year-old beer-guzzling guy.
Oh, I see. All those two, okay.
We do have a speaker on this item, and I'd like to hear him out, and that is Stephen Ankarow. I'm not sure if I pronounced that correctly.
Hi, my name is Stephen Ankarow. I'm the chair of Walk by Glendale, and I just wanted to say Walk by Glendale supports the Verdugo Arroyo project and the funding of the feasibility study, and I think it'd be a great asset for our community and for children and for all members of Glendale. So, thank you.
That's the last speaker we had. Okay? Yeah, if there is a motion to adjourn, we'll entertain it. I can, if I can, before I, before we adjourn, so I'd like to say just a couple of words, I want to exploit your time. I hope our residents, again, appreciate these meetings. I think they're wonderful. I sincerely hope that once my mayorship is up, which is, which it is, very soon, that this, I said this at the last meeting, too, but I hope that my colleagues will turn this into a tradition, and we continue doing this, because it's good for the city, it's good for the residents, and we remain engaged with our residents and our constituents this way. So, but that's it. Someone will...
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay, and we're adjourned. Thank you.